It being 6:03 on January 30th, 2024, I'm calling this Board of Selectmen meeting to order, and we'll begin with a pledge.
(inaudible)
This meeting is being recorded by PAC TV. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify us at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by contacting the selectman's office. The Highway Department is still seeking plow drivers for the upcoming winter season. We've increased our rates this year and are also offering a $750 insurance stipend for qualified contractors. For more information, please call 781-585-0513. If you wish to file an abatement, please go to the assessor's office and pick up an abatement application. As a reminder, abatement applications are due by February 1st. Today is the 30th, so you have a couple days to do it. Dog licenses are available in the clerk's office. Please keep in mind there's a $20 late fee if your dog is not registered by March 15th. As a reminder, our annual town meeting is scheduled for Saturday, May 4th, and the annual town election is scheduled for Saturday, May 18th. For anyone interested in volunteering, we have a number of vacancies on various committees and boards. One of those openings is on the capital planning committee, and they advise the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Town Meeting on all major projects and improvements that fall under their bylaw, and that could include the acquisition of equipment, land, buildings, or infrastructure for a public purpose. If you or someone you know would like to fill this vacancy, please contact a member of the Finance Committee. And to see a complete list of openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. Are there any other announcements?
A few people have asked about when we would start doing the signatures for openings for...
Oh, for the election?
Election, so I just, I've said, I think it's gonna be a little bit longer. I said to call the clerk's office, I'm sure they know.
So when to pull papers? I'm not sure when that schedule begins. Do you know, Keith?
I don't know the Paul, his town clerk has set a date yet, but if somebody wanted to reach out to them, I'll reach out to the clerk's office, they can certainly do that. If there's a date that's been set, he can let them know that. I will ask the clerk and let the board know, and we'll post it on the town's website as soon as that information's available. Thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay. Is there anyone here for open forum? Nope, I don't see any hands either. All right, so we're ready for our first appointment. So we're joined this evening by members of the Plymouth County Commissioners, and they're here to present our board with an ARPA check, so up to the microphones, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the members. A pleasure to be back in Kingston as always.
Can you push the button?
How's that? Better? All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the members. It's always a pleasure to be back in Kingston. As I often quip, as a graduate of Sacred Heart High School, I always consider Kingston my second hometown, coming from Rockland, but always a pleasure to be back. I'm joined by Commissioner Hanley this evening. We'll both have a couple of quick words to say before we give you the big check, although as we were joking before the meeting started, we already gave you the real check, so the business has been taken care of. But on behalf of Commissioner Wright and Treasurer O'Brien, they send their regrets. They couldn't be here this evening, but we've really appreciated the partnership, and they've appreciated the partnership working with Keith, Patricia, and the entire team here in Town Hall. We've been incredibly proud of our success with ARPA. We've been able to keep our administrative costs to date below 1%. National average is 7% to 10%, and that's due to the hard work and collaboration between the Commissioners and the Treasurer and the other three counties that we partnered with on administration. That means more money for Kingston, and that means more money for our member communities. Lastly, I just want to give a quick thank you to Senator Moran and Representative Lenatra, who are both staunch advocates for these funds. They are constantly calling Commissioner Hanley and I, as well as the Treasurer, to make sure that these funds are being expedited as judiciously as possible. So with your permission, I'll hand it over to Commissioner Hanley to say a few words.
Well, the beauty of it is, I think this is our third visit, and we're so happy to bring six-figure dollars to the town of Kingston. Seven. Oh, my goodness. Well, you guys are doing something right, and I will say this, the best use of this money, because we get to see all their communities and all their submissions, is when you can use this money towards projects that you don't have to borrow against. It's one-time money you're getting in, so it should be used for capital projects, and I think everything, every time you've applied, you've received the money for the best use of the money in the best interest of the taxpayers. So again, last time we were here, we were praising you, and we continue to do so this time. I would just remind you, we've sent out the notifications for the last round of ARPA funding that's remaining. You must choose projects that are encumbered before December 30th of 2024, and then you have up to three years to implement that project. Unfortunately for us, our job still continues after we give out the money on the monitoring to make sure that you're using the money in a proper way, so there's no clawback provisions. And we take great pride in the team that we've assembled with the law firm of Mince Levin. We have CLA as our auditors, and we have Sullivan and Powers, I'm sorry, CLA as our...
Main auditors.
Main auditors, all right. That's why I used to cheer. I'm just sunsetting today, it's been a long day. I got cold in my bones, but I want to thank you on behalf of your constituents, which are also our constituents, and happy constituents in an election year. Make hopefully an opportunity for us to get reelected. So that's it on the infomercial. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm gonna present the check, I guess, at this point.
Yeah, thank you. Unless there's any questions, I think we covered everything. We'd like to be a little quick.
No, thank you.
Yeah? No, like I said, we're grateful, and as Commissioner Hanley said, you know, Keith was on the Zoom call we did earlier this month to explain some of the deadlines we have for ARPA. We've made a commitment, not a single penny, we'll go back to Washington DC, we want to see it stay in Kingston and the other 26, other 27 member communities in Plymouth County, so stay tuned for more.
Great.
Great, thank you, okay? All right.
So now we have to...
Yeah, smile.
Take a check.
All right, we have to come around.
You gotta get him too.
Oh, yeah.
Take a picture. I asked Tom Taylor to take a picture.
Put you in the...
Oh, yay.
Bye-bye.
Ready? There you go.
Perfect.
Spend it well.
Keith, I'm gonna...
You wanna get a picture?
Thank you so much.
Keith, I was wondering if it's not too bad.
Not too bad.
We'll have to go on.
We'll have to go on.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to the second item on our agenda. So in 2023, a resident presented to this board his proposal for a sugar kelp bed in Kingston Bay and submitted the paperwork for this public hearing. I'll read the public hearing notice, and then we'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing, and we have some additional information before us this evening for consideration. So start by saying, the Kingston Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 30th, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Town House, Room 226 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Massachusetts, to consider the application of a proposed sugar kelp farm. The applicant is Jared Wakess, 15 Village Path, Kingston, and is proposing a sugar kelp farm. The farm is a 2.9-acre lot located at the coordinates provided in the printed public hearing notice. Is that sufficient? Can I say that without reading all the coordinates? Yes, okay. The farm will consist of an area 135 feet by 935 feet with rows of kelp which will be grown from mid-October through mid-April. A copy of the presentation is available in the selectman's office.
I move the Board of Selectmen, open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Yes.
So if I could just add a couple of quick things before the public gets up and speaks. So we've had a couple of conversations with the State Fisheries Department about this to make sure what we were presenting to the board was accurate. So the role of the town of Kingston in this sugar kelp application is to determine whether or not the town of Kingston wants to allow a section of Kingston Bay to be used in this manner. There are no applications or permits that are issued by the town of Kingston. If this was to move forward tonight, and the Board of Selectmen approves the location, the applicant would then move to the State Fisheries Department, there would be a full application there. They would then have to go to, excuse me, the Army Corps of Engineers for a review by them, and if all the, if everything lined up and everything was approved by all the different state and federal organizations, the Department of Fisheries would issue a permit to allow sugar kelping in Kingston Bay during the time periods that have been outlined in the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. So how do we want to start? Do you want to say anything, Jared?
Jared Wakess, 15 Village Path. I don't think I'll go through the slides again unless there's any questions on what's in there. Just a note to what changed since June of last year was the coordinates changed, so we did move it to a less busy place, so it's not near a channel. It's sort of out of the way.
Can you share the map?
We removed any reference to, there was some consideration last time for possibly some shellfish with kelp, but given the current waiting list, we're moving forward just kelp at this time.
Okay.
I think that's all I had, other than the updated coordinates.
Okay, and then I just, I asked Don to pull up the updated map, just so folks can see it, and I don't have it in front of me right now, but do you remember the date of the June meeting by chance?
Don't.
It's okay if you don't. I'll see if I can find it before the end of the meeting, in case anyone wants to watch. There was a, you went through all of the slides in great detail, so if people want to re-watch that, I wanted to give them that opportunity, so.
Yeah, so it was originally, the spot we proposed was down by where it says "Chair Screen." That was the channel coming in near Cordage Park into, in front of Grace Beach, and we've now moved it to right along the edge of the line with Ducksbury, over by Ichabod's Flat. The importance of these locations is that compared to shellfish, it needs deep water. It really can't have any times where the water's completely drained out, especially during the growing season, which is primarily during the winter. So this seems like the best location at this time that we found in Kingston. That's all I had.
And our amazing clerk...
June 6th, 2023.
Just pulled up the date.
Thank you.
So for anyone who was interested in re-watching those slides and presentation in that great detailed description, it was June 6th, 2023. Okay.
Copious notes.
Any, I guess, questions from the pub, comments from the public? Questions? Anyone?
The only other item I wanted to mention, excuse me, is our shellfish constable and our harbor master, both in the audience, both of those individuals have approved this proposed location.
Okay.
Matthew Webble, 23 Jones River Drive. I'm generally in support of this, the sugar kelp farm and the location, in consideration that it's, you know, just a sugar kelp farm, that it's going to be seasonal, as long as like a couple of things are looked at and taken into consideration here. One is just access, you know, it's, this map isn't, you know, exactly accurate, but it is in these, you know, Kingston is mostly flats at low tide, and anywhere there's waters or passages, like a road. So for commercial shell fishermen, duck hunters, fishermen, there needs to be access. And I'm also a cap, tugboat captain, professional mariner, and there's, you know, maritime law and restrictions that you can't block a channel anyway and keep a vessel from trying to go to sea, so there's, I'm trying to think, what's the kind of precedent that, you know, I think this location's fine as long as it's considered that small vessels can move through the area, especially in the off-season. It's people who are mostly commercial shell fishermen, people with local knowledge who will be able to get by and can work with the harbor master and Jared on this. So I don't think that's an issue, I think that can be worked around. I'm also the first person on the aquaculture waiting list. My interest was mostly in shellfish, so if this is just kelp and just seasonal, you know, I feel fine that Jared, you know, was kind of going in this direction with this section. That being said, you know, we've adopted shellfish grant regulations and encourage, you know, that there be a good hearing on adopting regulations to cover seaweed aquaculture as well, and that they kind of somewhat coincide too, you know, the shellfish grant applications have a limit of three acres total, and, you know, one person can have interest in one aqua, you know, aquaculture grant of up to three acres. And that also be taken into consideration in this, that we don't end up kind of backdooring this into ending up being shellfish and people ending up with, you know, more than three acres or something like that. Does that seem fair, reasonable to, you know, people as far as considering, considering that, you know, that it's just limited to three acres?
And the current proposal is 2.9 acres, I believe.
Yeah, no, and that's what I'm saying, I'm just saying, you know, I think that if Jared's just doing seaweed in this case, and he wants to stay on the shellfish grant, you know, list, I think that's also reasonable if he wants to someday move if this doesn't work out. You don't want to put too much stakes on something that's kind of an experiment locally. If it doesn't, you know, work out here, like I think he should be able to stay on the list for shellfish, and maybe if this doesn't work out, change, change the location. I'm trying to think what else I have for, I guess that's pretty much it. Trying to think if I have anything else to say. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
John Webble, 23 Jones River Drive. 21. 21, oh. Used to be 23. I don't, I don't think this is a huge problem, provided this is seasonal and that, that little guzzle is kept open April through, April to October or May to October, because I don't know if you're familiar with the channel, it's a great spot to fish for bass, there's also fluke in there, and it's also not a bad spot for recreational lobster people to set gear. I've done it in the past. I do question, you know, Jared's ability to do, in the future, do suspended aquaculture in there, because that makes that just about impassable in the boating season. So provided we just stick to kelp and, and, you know, keep the, keep it from October to, I don't know, March, April, it probably isn't a bad thing. I do have some questions about the waiting list, though, and I don't necessarily agree with my son. I think that if you're going to get three acres or close to three acres of aqua, of an aquaculture grant, you need to step aside on the list. I don't think that's fair to the people behind Jared on the list. I think it's pretty unreasonable, regardless of what you're growing. Anyway.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Nope, not, nothing I can think of right now. Thank you.
Joe Zlogar, you're a shellfish constable. Excuse me. To address what John said about being kept on the shellfish lease waiting list versus his kelp farm, if you will, proposal. In the eyes of the state and Mass General Law, the kelp farm where it does not involve sea bottom is outside of the normal shellfish lease, and that includes fees that are chargeable right now, shellfish leases are stated in Mass General Laws. The fees... Pardon that, I thought I checked it off.
It's still going.
It's a family goal, where are you? Where are you? It's usually my family asking me where I am right now.
Fees for the kelp farm will be set by the town.
Can you repeat what you just, the last part, we said?
The fees for basically occupying town resources will be set by the town. And I do have a draft, very rough draft, of regulations that would apply for the town. And I haven't looked into that if, that being said, there should be an actual license issued that's still...
But it's licensed by the state, correct? Not by the town?
It's permitted by the state.
Well, I guess I'm going to respectfully disagree. The only role the town of Kingston has to play in this, according to the state, is whether or not to allow the sugar kelping in, on, in Kingston Bay someplace. The State Department of Fisheries will issue, will issue whatever license there is.
The word, okay, license versus permit is what we're talking about.
There's no permit issued by the town of Kingston.
Or license.
Or license. All there is is an approval to use that space.
At this point.
At any point.
No, that's...
We are, Massachusetts is a home rule state.
So I'm just going to tell you, I'm just going to tell you what the state told me. We can argue this, or we can discuss it later.
Well, that's my point.
You know, when you bring your rules and regulations forward, we can have that conversation, but I was assured today by the individual from the state that the only role this, the Board of Selectmen, the town of Kingston have with this is determining whether or not they will allow this particular location for this particular use. That's it.
And does DMF even have jurisdiction over this?
They do.
Department of Marine Fisheries, for those of you who are not boaters. I guess my question then leads to if sugar kelp isn't shellfish, under whose jurisdiction does it fall?
It is aquaculture.
Okay.
So...
You saw me making eye contact with two people there.
It's betwixt and between, or it could be...
Okay, I mean, I'm just, I'm curious because it's...
No, that's a good question.
I don't know where it falls.
Yeah, and I've been asking those questions too.
Tom Taylor, the Kingston Harbor Master. I spoke to the state yesterday for quite a while, and it's up to the Harbor Master to make sure he's in the right spot, to make sure he has the right gear out. It's not anything to do with shellfishing. So it's like an umbrella. Aquaculture's like an umbrella, you got shellfishing and kelp farming, two different things completely. The state oversees everything, like Keith said.
Okay, so in terms of where it's placed, and if something isn't happening the way it's supposed to, it falls under the Harbor Master's jurisdiction, not the shellfish constable?
Right.
Okay.
That's what I was told.
Okay.
Cool. And it's, he gets, the license he gets from the state is a non-shellfish permit. He can't grow shellfish there at all.
Okay.
Only kelp farm.
So, sorry, I'll go for it. I was just gonna say, so my question is, I guess, on if shellfishing can't be done there, then what's the concern with the waitlist on it?
There isn't one. According to the state, he should remain on the waitlist.
Two separate...
I think it's two separate things.
And there's, but the language of the waiting list says aquaculture grant waiting list, and so that's been the, that's been the debate going on. When it was originally written, should it have said aquaculture shellfish grant? Maybe, but right now it says aquaculture grant waiting list, so it doesn't specify what that necessarily is under that umbrella.
Yeah, and it's not, he's not leasing. He's not leasing an area, he's just asking you if he could work off that area. So it's not a lease either.
There's no grant involved there at all.
There's no grant, there's no lease, there's nothing like that. It's totally separate from the aquaculture shellfish grants, or leases, whatever you want to call it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So a couple of quick things. I mean, I think there's an opportunity, without harming anybody, to, now that we have potentially shellfishing and sugar kelping, maybe we need to refine that list, waiting list, to aquaculture shellfishing. By doing that, it wouldn't, I don't think it would, that would hurt anybody. Secondly, I guess the question, and maybe it comes down the line a little bit later, but if and when the waiting list, Jared is chosen off the waiting list to become somebody who's now can hold one of the three aquaculture shellfish licenses, is the board willing to allow him to have two locations in Kingston Bay, doing two very separate things, but still two licenses, and should that be considered?
Yeah, and just from the standpoint of, you know, when you're looking at the bay here, it's essentially mostly a mud flat, and so there's a lot, we don't have a lot of areas to do aquaculture in general. And so the question that I've heard from people has been, a few people, not a lot, because not a lot of people, not a lot of people spend a lot of time on this, but has been if there's four, and I know, I know there's a difference between the lease, but if there's four places where you're allowed to do some type of aquaculture, should one person occupy two of those? It's, it's future thinking about, on the list, but that's been kind of out of four areas where you can, you're designated to do some type of aquaculture, is one person or one company or one entity, should they be allowed to occupy two out of those four? So three acres, three acre, you know, roughly three acres each, having six of those 12 acres, and that's, that's a question. I think there's a few other things. I mean, in general, I generally like the idea, I think it's, I think, I think the research has been great, I think there's not a lot to, not a lot to fret about on that. It looks like a fantastic idea and endeavor. I think just some of the questions I have that make me leery on taking a vote on it tonight would be that I think we're to do it, to vote, or to, to accept or deny without, especially if we're going to accept it, without having rules and regulations, without understanding who's actually, who is the official jurisdiction over those rules and regulations. So if the Harbor Master has...
Meaning codified, like coming from...
On the town. So, so, so as the town, we have now kelp farming rules and regulations. I'm not saying this has to be some crazy 30-page thing, I mean, you know, the state's done most of the homework for us, but I think in our packet, when we vote on something, we should have that adopted into what we have voted on. And so it's, it's more of like a, for me, it's more of a housekeeping thing than it is like, than it is a negative or positive. I think, I think if we're going to vote to adopt something that's an ongoing, I don't, you know, a permit to be there is, I guess it's not a lease, we should have things stated. We should, I think we should have something stated from the state that this will, this will only be for kelp farming from the DMF. I'd like to have something official on that when we vote on it, so it's in the same packet that we see. I'd like to see, because of the area, and that's why it was chosen, because of the depth, but I'd like, I'd like to see something in there that says it will only be for this from the state, because after we allot that, that piece of public water use, you know, it's really up to the state at that point to do anything.
So wouldn't that be just approving the location contingent upon it being only for this from this time to this time?
Sure, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the state give us some type of, I mean, if the DMF is going to talk to everybody, I'd like to see something official in our packet upon that. And then the, the one thing that, so if the Harbor Master's the only person that has town jurisdiction to do any type of oversight, which would be, you know, the... which would be, you know, the gear, right, the gear, the mooring, the mooring balls and the actual pyramid moorings and stuff like that. I just, it has to be brought up, the fact that this is done during the off-season, which we do not have a Harbor Master staff paid for to be on. So the only person in the oversight during that time period would be an office that is not employed during the off-season. So it's a seasonal thing, which is a great, which is also part of why it's so amazing. But the only person that would do oversight over the gear and to do monthly or bimonthly checks isn't actually employed during that time period, or majority of that time period. So I think it's something we have to take in consideration. I think if we can get all of those things checked, then I think we move forward, or we do whatever. But I think, there's a few things, I think we need to get the rules and regulations nailed down. I just don't think we should adopt something, and then rules and regulations don't necessarily have to be about, we're not talking strictly about kelp. We're also talking about the rules and regulations of the, it's more about the gear that's going into the water than anything. The gear, the time that it's coming out, and I know a lot of that's stated, but we should have that in an official town memo from the Office of the Harbor Master through the Selectmen's Office that states, this is the date, this is the date it comes out, this is the date it goes in, this is the date it comes out, this is the type of gear that goes in, these are the type of, you know, all that, so we know those, simple, I mean, we've already gone and gone through those in this, but we have that unofficial, sealed rules and regulations that we can then make a motion on. I think once we have those, I feel like we're in a qualified position. I don't wanna retroactively, personally, I don't wanna retroactively go back, put rules and regulations after we've already done that. I feel like that should come beforehand.
So I just wanna make sure I understand. So I thought that we were discussing only the location, and maybe that's my misunderstanding, is that we were voting potentially on whether or not we think this proposed location is the right location for something like this, should it move forward? So I guess my question for Jared is, if at some point, maybe not this meeting, but if the location is okayed, what happens next?
So if you approve the location, then I could start the permitting process with the state and any federal process that they would require.
Okay, and they don't have rules and regulations, like what Tyler's talking about regarding these farming?
I think they do, but I would still recommend, obviously, as a resident of Kingston, to have regulations.
Okay.
On myself.
Most of it's gonna be taken from the chapter, they're chapter 91, the state regulations and the federal regulations, but then adopting them as a town.
The one thing I'd say is, the permitting process is lengthy. I think Duxbury, they have 12 acres there that was recently approved. That took two years. If it's less, good, but we can only, we can only seed it in October. So if we don't make this October, which we probably won't, it'll be another year. So I think it would be nice to start the process now and say that, you know, with your vote, you know, nothing will be seeded in the water until the regulations are approved or.
Yeah, I mean, we could make a location approval contingent upon, you know, local regulations being adopted. I know, I can see your hesitation.
That's not necessarily the way I would go about it. I don't like to retroactively do that.
Can I just say?
We don't even know, we don't even know necessarily, I mean.
Okay, just proposing.
Yeah, no, no, it's a good idea. I just, I think tonight, we're just on camera discussing who has jurisdiction over the gear that goes in there and who oversees it. I think we should get clarity on that before we take a vote on it.
Well, again, the vote is only on the location at this point, but I hear you.
I'm not talking about kelp farming. I'm talking about, I'm talking about, well, first of all, there was a discussion about that.
Sure.
We believe verbally tonight that, and I, that we don't have jurisdiction over the licensing of the kelp farming, which I agree with. But we do have an obligation to understanding the rules and regulations for what goes in the water.
I'm not, I'm just trying to check all the possible avenues forward.
And I'm making sure, and I'm making sure I'm not talking about the licensing part necessarily pertaining to kelp, but to the gear that goes in the water, and to understand dates, regulations, size of pyramids, all that kind of stuff. And not necessarily retroactively doing it. Those things can be changed later, but having some concrete, no pun intended, things in place, I think when we vote on it, it would probably, that would make me feel more comfortable about it.
I myself feel as though, as a person who doesn't fish and does no idea about shellfishing and things, I do feel like shellfishing and the kelp are very different things. If he was to come and say to us, I wanna additionally do shellfishing into this, I would say, you better get back on that list and be able to stay on that list. I think, we're very much saying this is a kelp farm. You took off the shellfishing altogether because you said, we knew that this was gonna come up. And you're not taking away from anybody else's shellfishing, because you're not shellfishing. So there's nothing about numbers or anything like that that you have to worry about. And that I'm aware of, there's not a lot of people looking to do kelp farming in this town. So if you were to say that, like, somebody on that list right now is like, for the shellfishing goes, okay, well, I wanna be a kelp farmer, can I go on the top of the list now, so I can do both?
You probably made a list for that, too.
Well, that's what I mean. Like, I mean, from what I'm aware of, the only person I've seen who has thought about this is Jared, and good for you, but I'm very excited to have something else besides the shellfishing that's making money. I do know quite a lot about the blue economy, and, you know, this is new and invigorating, and I'm excited about it, like you say. Three acres is great. I think getting into it, and like Tyler said, I think there's a lot of regulations that go into it that you, that we're getting into. It takes a long time. But when you bring the shellfishing into it, it's a whole nother ballgame, but I think that that, we have to keep them somewhat separate right now, because we're talking about him doing kelp farming because he's not, he took the shellfishing off the plate. And if he wanted to add shellfishing to it, I think that would be a whole nother conversation to it, but we're talking about just kelp.
He can't add shellfish to it, because it's not a grant. It's not a lease. Totally different.
Yeah.
It's impossible.
It's impossible for him to do that, so again.
The only reason it came up when he was presenting it was because when he was explaining the book that he had read that kind of sparked this initial idea, it showed that integrated farming.
Right. And as far as all the gear that goes in there, it's basically all waterways type of thing, that all the rules that we have for waterways. Moorings, chains, stuff like that. That's the gear. And don't forget, everybody that's in a boat in the summertime, he's out of the water. Everybody that's home in their nice warm clothes, he's in the water. So everything's out of the water. And I hope he realizes that, because I know it's cold out there.
Okay, so it sounds like, so Tyler would like to continue this public hearing?
For the rules and regulations, but also for, for the one little thing we do have jurisdiction over to figure out how we solve that problem. Because at this point, the person that we assume does have the jurisdiction is off-season. So I think it's something we need to look at before, before we jump into, you know, allowing something that doesn't have the person that should be overseeing it paid to be able to do that.
John wants to add something.
John Wubble again. One more comment, and I respectfully disagree with Tom. We've disagreed over the years. When I spoke to the state, they were very clear that these two things are home rule issues. You decide. The other, the other point I have is that if Jared has three acres strictly as a kelp farm and not used for vertical, integrated aquaculture, because he did talk about lanternets, about growing mussels. I read Brent Smith's book too, when it first came out, and it's exciting and interesting. But you have to decide, if he has three acres here for kelp, how can he move over and have three acres of shellfish bottom? It's aquaculture. You really need to, you really need to understand the definition or take into consideration the definition of aquaculture. And my feeling is that it's not fair to those behind him on the list for him to hold a place when he's already got his three, he's decided on kelp. I mean, you really have to consider that, because it's a matter of.
And I think Tyler spoke to that a little bit with some concerns about coming up with some sort of opinion about whether that makes sense to be able to do both or not. So I think that would be part of the proposed regulations that Tyler was speaking to. Am I?
I think a lot of people wanna do kelping.
Am I right?
Yeah, no, I think it's something, yeah, I think it's something to consider.
You're proposing, we need to discuss that.
Yeah, I think it's something to consider.
Exactly that.
And the other consideration about kelp is, as Jared said, you need deep water. Or you need a reasonable amount of water. And as, quote Tyler, we're mud flats most of the time. If you've ever seen an aerial photograph of the flats at low tide, there's just little, in fact, if you looked on his thing, those little dark tracers throughout the flats, that's where the water is, and there really isn't much of it. And there's very little deep water that is in channel.
Okay.
Anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
And again, it's in the wintertime that he's gonna be there. So nobody, it's not gonna bother anybody that has a boat in Kingston, I'm sure.
All right.
Just, I don't know if I made it clear before, Matthew Wubble, 23 Jones River Drive again, but just to refine kind of what Tommy says, I do think, you issue razor clam license year-round, and there's people who do coastal duck hunting. So I do think there has to be some passage at low tide through this guzzle. I just wanna make sure that we're clear that, you know, there's some language that, you know, don't block it. I mean, certainly take up most of it, you know, use what you need, but we do need to allow low tide passage through there. It's an important thing.
Okay.
On my slides, I do indicate that there is approximately 33 feet between the edge of the bank and the start of the operations, and that's because you have to be 25 feet from yew grass. So you can't actually go around the farm if you were in the water in the wintertime for some reason, but.
Okay. So do we wanna continue so that there's time to put together some draft regulations?
Doesn't have to be a crazy amount of time. I think it'd just be good to, I think it'd make sense to come back and put some of these asks and have them in our packet, and that way we can understand what we're going for.
So our next regular meeting is February 13th.
I feel like this is gonna happen throughout the process, though.
So that'd be two-week process? I mean, that'd be two weeks? I guess it's a question of.
Oh, Joe wants to say something. We have to get the microphone. We can hear you, but the people at home can't.
If you guys make the list, we'll get to work on making something.
When Joe says "you guys," I think he means "you."
Picked right up on that.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that's what we'd be commissioning is the Harbor Master and the shellfish warden, constable, sorry, I always say warden. Yeah, to start working on, on rules and regulations.
Well, he already has some chicken scratch, he's already.
Yeah, he's a draft.
Yep. But it hasn't been submitted, so it's, you know, once it's submitted, we can look at it and.
We can reach out to the state. I'm not sure the state's gonna be willing to provide us anything specifically, because they haven't seen, they haven't seen any documentation yet. So we can, I think in the regulations, excuse me, we can identify the type of gear that can go in the water. We can identify the timeframe that the sugar kelping season will be. We can define that it can be no more than three acres. I think there's gonna have to be some discussion at some point whether or not there's more, what, a person can hold more than one aquaculture license at any one time. But I think Mr. Zlokar has a lot of this stuff squared away, and I would ask he and Mr. Taylor to try to finalize this sometime next week, so we can try to get this wrapped up for the February 13th meeting. And the other question I guess I have, and I just don't know the answer to it, is, and it was raised, I think, by somebody, I apologize for not recognizing the correct person. Mr. Taylor is not a Harbor Master in February. How we, how, if he needs to manage sugar kelping in the winter season, there's a cost obviously to that, and who should absorb that cost?
Right. And I would just caution against being specific about the equipment going in and suggest referring to the waterways regulations so that you don't have to duplicate things should things change over time. Just, if you're using the same types of equipment, and as you said, it falls under the waterways regulations, I would just reference the waterways regulations in whatever proposal you do for the aquaculture.
This crew has a pretty good handle on the waterways.
Just don't wanna have to edit multiple documents all the time.
Yep.
Okay.
If this isn't a lease, what is the, like, process in, if there's ever need to take it back or whatever? What is there, what's the process like?
Meaning, like, the license itself, the permit?
Well, we're leasing out the land, but we're not leasing, right?
That's part of what should be in the rules and regulations.
So my, the reason I'm asking that question is kind of, one, it needs to be in a regulation portion because it protects Jared as well, as well as the town.
Right.
So I'm just wondering what that process is.
I'm not sure, and I, because the state, basically, as far as, as far as I can figure out, the state basically taking over when he gets all the gear in the water and everything. Say he's landing something, that's when DMF, Division Marine Fisheries, when they drive around in trucks, they go over and check him out. That's got nothing to do with the town at all. As far as you people saying, okay, you've done something wrong, we're gonna pull your license, I think you can do that at any time.
Yeah, 'cause it's more, my question was more to protect us and also protect him from us just saying tomorrow, I'm glad you just spent thousands of dollars on equipment, we're gonna pull it anyways, but also on the same token.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, there's gotta be some type of checks and balances to protect whoever, whoever has the.
As of yesterday, the state has really no rules. They haven't figured anything out for this year. It's kind of, kind of a new thing.
Well, then even more reason for us to have rules.
Yeah, maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There's other communities doing it, I mean.
They did tell me that he has to, there's not much that he has to do. He's gotta go to Army Corps Engineers, get approved by the Board of Selectmen, get approved by the Harbor Master, and conservation, he has to get a request of understanding. And then he, the permit that you were talking about, Keith, was, it's a non-shellfish permit through the state. And that's all he has to get.
Okay.
It takes a while, though. Chapter 91, this chair is.
That permit is, is it general, I can't remember, it's chapter 93, is it?
General programmatic.
Yes, you didn't actually.
Yeah, that one. Basically, it's, it's a catch-all. If we, if we can't figure something out, that's the one we get. It's a $10 annual renewable permit from the state. That's all they have.
But it's a non, non, non-shellfish.
Right.
Right.
All right, so we've got some homework to do. So should we continue this two weeks, and if it's not enough time, we can always continue it again?
Works for me.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Sure.
So you wanna, you wanna make a motion to continue this public hearing until February 13th at, say, 7:15?
So moved.
6:15, excuse me.
Just, we have a 6:15 with pump and sand and gravel, I believe, on the 13th.
Yes.
So we may wanna do a little later for them.
We can say seven, and it can go after seven. We just can't go before. So seven would work.
Seven, February 13th?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so seven o'clock, February 13th, make a motion to.
Continue.
Continue.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sheila?
I guess.
Okay, so that's four zero zero. Okay. So we'll see in two weeks.
Takes the energy out of the water. I'm so excited.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to item number three. So we have, we received a request from Paul Curley to hold the Best Buddies Challenge through Kingston the morning of Saturday, June 1st. So for those unfamiliar with the organization and event, Best Buddies is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to establishing a global volunteer movement, creating opportunities for one-to-one friendships, integrated employment, and leadership development for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This is the 25th Best Buddies Challenge, which, this is a main fundraising event for them. And they have a 100-mile-long ride, starting in Boston, finishing in Hyannis Port. There is a 50-mile start in Carver, 20-mile start in Sandwich. In total, they expect approximately 600 riders, and they will travel through Kingston using Landing Road, Main Street, Brook Street, and Elm Street, and will likely pass through town between 9:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. So as they've done in years past, the event organizers will work with each department to hire the appropriate number of officers as the event date approaches. The request was forwarded to the Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Superintendent of Streets, Trees, and Parks, and their recommendations were before us in our packets. The Police Chief noted that the event has been held since 1989 without incident, and recommends our board vote favorably on the request. And he included his recommendation within the suggested motion before us. The Superintendent of Streets, Trees, and Parks added that this has been a great event over the past years and is for a great cause.
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the request from Paul Curley to hold their 24th Annual Best Buddies Challenge Cycling Event on June 1st, 2024. According to the traffic control plan presented with the following conditions, Best Buddies successfully acquires the proper permits from Mass DOT. Best Buddies contacts the Kingston Police Department for the scheduling of detail officers as outlined in the event's traffic plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have a four zero zero. Great. Great. And we'll put up those signs ahead of time and folks will know it's coming and maybe we'll make an announcement later too. All right, so we have a donation that we need to accept as our first additional item. Actually, several donations.
I move the Board of, uh, I move the Board of Selectmen accept the following donations. Three hundred dollars in gift cards from Daniel Tucker, one hundred dollars in gift cards from Janet Holmes, one hundred dollars in gift cards from Len and Linda Warner, and two thousand donation from an anonymous donor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you so much for those generous donations. That's great.
Can I just make a quick note from the last one? It is the rain date for Silver Lake graduation.
Okay.
On the first, so, um.
That's good, it's not, it's on the other side of town.
It's usually on the other side of town, but just to let people know it is the rain date. Hopefully, we don't need it.
Okay. Thank you.
I always check, I look right on that time.
All right, so next up, we have a, we received a letter of interest from Lucy Coletta to fill the vacant associate member position on the Council on Aging Advisory Board. The advisory board voted on this item in their meeting on January tenth and voted in unanimous support of making this appointment. With that said, I see a lot of them here, but unless anyone has any questions, we can move to a motion on that request.
Uh, I move to appoint Lucy Coletta to the COA Advisory Board as an associate member to a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Is it short because, you know, so she can decide she doesn't want to do it? No, just kidding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero, great.
Congratulations, Lucy.
Lucy is an avid volunteer over at the COA, so she'll be a great member to the board.
Thanks, everybody, for sitting around waiting for that today.
All right, so we have a couple of resignations before us this evening that we need to accept.
Okay. I move the Board of Selectmen approve the resignation of Brian Woods from Zoning Board of Appeals, Associate Member, as well as Natalie Wegman and Glenn Duffy from Conservation effective immediately.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I always feel awkward doing that because I'm not in favor, but we have to accept it.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Yes, and thank you for your service to the town, absolutely. And if anyone's interested, we have openings now as Associate Member on the Zoning Board of Appeals and Conservation Commission. Okay, so, next up, we received a request from the Superintendents of Streets, Trees, and Parks to deem the old office trailer at the transfer station that was once used as the swap shop as surplus. Thank God. As Mr. Bazler explains in the memo he sent to us, in nineteen ninety-five, the trailer was used as our animal control office and once the animal control building was constructed, the trailer was then used for the construction of the senior center and then again for the construction of the townhouse before it was moved to the transfer station where it sat and was the swap shop. So the swap shop was closed in twenty twenty and sat unused for several years. During that time, there were leaks in the roof and that damaged the flooring, which now the trailer is unsafe for folks to walk through. So Mr. Bazler and his team will dismantle it and, and recycle any of the material that they can, disposing of the rest if we deem this a surplus.
We've come a long way from the animal shelter in that thing, so.
Where you're going, over there, I see it.
I move the Board of Selectmen declare the former swap shop trailer surplus and approve of its disposal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that's a four zero zero. Okay. So we have a Police Chief search update and next steps. Tyler?
Yes, thank you. We have gone through the, last week went through the Assessment Center, which is a time where candidates go through a, a time where they basically go through real life scenarios and get tested on the results of their answers and then how they work within those constraints. And the search committee has brought one person to the table to be considered to the board and that meeting will be February eighth at six PM, right here, and for a formal interview, followed by an executive session. So, you know, months of deliberating and resumes and interviews and backgrounds and assessment centers has led us to somebody who looks to be a fantastic candidate that the search committee unanimously put forward to the board for consideration and it's a really exciting time coming up next week as we do the interview. And I think, I think for anybody that's, you know, should, interested in this, which I know there's a lot of people interested in this, coming to, coming to fruition and seeing the person that will be sitting in front of us next week, it's a really great time for the town to participate and to listen in and to, you know, get to see the process in which this happens. This is the first process that we've all gone through as a board, but also get to see the process of the candidate in front of us as an introduction to the town. Obviously, that's prior to a lot of things that need to happen after that for that to come into fruition, like an affirmative vote from the board. But I really encourage anybody in town to tune in next Thursday and get to be a part of the process, whether in person here or on TV or on Zoom. It's a, yeah, it's a big time for us as a town and the community's, search committee's gone through a lot to kind of get to this point. It's been just an amazing thing to learn and see and from a civilian standpoint and they'll see the process. So really excited and looking forward to it.
It's been like three months, four?
I think roughly three months.
Any questions?
Good job.
Keith, anything to add from the other side of the, the committee or the search group?
No, I think you summarized that very, very well. Looking forward to having the board meet our candidate next week.
Okay. Great. All right. Well, the next item is a discussion and possible vote on the Selectmen recommended fiscal year twenty-five operating budget. So in our meeting on January eleventh, Town Administrator provided us an overview of his proposed twenty fiscal, excuse me, fiscal year twenty-five budget and gave us the nice big thick budget binder for us to review. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to go through it all. I sent some questions to Keith, I assume others did as well. I guess my only outstanding question is probably related to the, the police budget. I just received an email from the Police Chief just expressing some concerns about some of the potential reductions. I know you haven't had a chance to look at that yet because it just came in, but I think all the other questions I had asked, you had already addressed, so.
So there were a couple of questions regarding wage proposals by the Fire Chief and the Police Chief. The Chair asked me to look into those. I shared that information this morning with both the Fire and Police Chief, asked them if they could provide some sort of a written response to the questions that were raised regarding frankly, what, you know, what is the impact of the proposed cuts the Town Administrator made? In speaking to the Fire Chief, he said he had a conversation with you and I believe said he was comfortable with the changes that had been made.
He did.
As you just mentioned, the Police Chief just sent us something in the last ten or fifteen minutes that the board will have to discuss and debate.
Yeah.
We need to try to, you know, frankly, we need to try to finalize the budget. We don't need to do that tonight, but what I would hope we could do, and I spoke into the FinCom Chair about this, is try to have a budget for, that the Board of Selectmen can vote a budget bottom line on, on the thirteenth of February.
So to be fair, the Police Chief sent his email this afternoon. I just didn't see it until just now, so.
All right, I didn't see that.
I just want to give him the, he didn't just send, he sent it at around noon time and I, I just didn't see it until now, so I apologize for that. I think that's fine. I'm, I don't know if you folks had specific questions on the proposed budget? Keith and I met and spoke about my questions. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with voting the current budget as it is with the exception of police because I, I think we need time to digest what the Police Chief is, his concerns and you guys need a chance to see that. So we can wait to do the whole thing on the thirteenth or it doesn't matter to me. And we did talk, Finance Committee has met several times and when the Chairman was here in our last meeting, he did say, look, I don't need it by January thirty-first, it's fine. So we can vote it, the whole thing next time if you'd like.
Is there any plus or minus to doing, having, voting in with a caveat or waiting?
No, just under, I mean, I, I think the only comment I would make, I don't think there's a need to do it tonight at all. Just please understand that right now, as we sit here on February thirteenth, there's a, there's the continued public hearing on the earth removal. I don't, and I do expect from speaking to our planner that the peer review will be done. So you'll have that, that evening.
Kelp.
The kelp situation should, will be discussed.
No, that's the eighth.
We also, we also were notified earlier this week that the Animal Control Officer would like to have a dangerous dog hearing on another situation. I don't, I don't know if we have to have it on the thirteenth or we can do it on the twenty-seventh, but we'll, we'll look. So the thirteenth could be busy. Again, I would just ask if people have any questions on the budget, if they can get them to me so I can get those, I can get answers back to the board. We can certainly forward to you the Police Chief's comments on the proposed budget cuts and so you'll have that before the meeting. So it doesn't have to take a lot of time on the thirteenth, it just depends on how many questions people have.
So just to summarize my, my question for the police budget was the only real, the noticeable difference between the proposed budget and the Town Administrator's proposed budget was a little over thirty thousand dollars. So my question to the Chief was, what is the impact of that reduction to your budget? And he explained that the proposed reduction over time may impact the Chief's ability to cover extra personnel during storm emergencies, hamper community outreach at the senior center, impact the ability to provide an SRO officer at the elementary or intermediate schools, offer the RAD, RAD kids program through the Recreation Department, conduct detectives investigations, et cetera. So, I mean, it does go on, I did forward it and if you, if you look at the past years over time, it did, it did jump quite a bit in this proposed budget. The, from fiscal year twenty-three, it was five hundred and sixty-three thousand and fiscal year twenty-four, the budget was six hundred and eighty-two thousand. So there's already a big jump built in, so. Anyway, I asked that question and then the other question I had was related to the Harbor Master's budget because there was a significant jump between the budgeted amount of two hundred and fifty dollars in the vehicle repair line and the actual so far, the, where things stand currently for this fiscal year is over three thousand dollars. So I wanted to know what that was and why. I know it's for this year's budget, but I wanted to know if it would impact this upcoming year. And he had said that the two hundred and fifty dollar line for vehicle repairs is simply not adequate. That figure barely covers oil changes and inspection sticker. So the fiscal year twenty-four, the amount spent year to date is three thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and four cents. The vehicle needs shocks, front and rear brakes, parking brake repair and replacement of the VHF antenna. So I just don't know if the two hundred and fifty dollars is sufficient based on that information or not, but, and then there, the other item I think that was slightly different was a proposed five thousand dollar reduction in the Police Department's vehicle repair line. So he's concerned, the Chief is concerned that repair costs have increased significantly and the cut would, would hinder the ability to keep the vehicles maintained. So I'm not saying that you need to take all that information in and vote on it right now, I just wanted to share that information because that's, that's what I have. So. Anyway, so you guys can chew on that, I guess. And I think we should, I don't think we need, I, I don't think we need to vote things separately the way that Finance Committee does unless folks have an inclination to do so. If we can find a solution to, to this difference and decide how we want to, where we want to land on that, we can vote on that next week, next, or two weeks from now. Plus, I'd like Eric to weigh in too. Okay. All right. Okay. All right, so we have minutes.
I move the Board of Selectmen to accept the open session meeting minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just to go back quickly to the budget, if we don't think it's going to take long, but it could potentially have questions, does it make sense to just do it next week's meeting?
At the Police Chief interview?
Or? No, okay. I just, I don't really care either. I just didn't know. Figured I'd throw that out there.
I just, so we're going to have an exec, uh, that's going to be, I would guess, an hour and a half to two hour meeting.
Okay.
So if you want to.
I just didn't know.
Happy to do it.
No.
I think it'd be good to be focused solely on the, on that one important issue.
Okay.
And my, my inclination is to put the budget discussion near the end because I'd not, now that we have the feedback in writing here, if we do need to involve the, the Chief, we can give him a heads up that it would be later.
Yep.
All right, so Keith, over to you for your report.
Thank you. We have received, received to date three bids for legal services. Those bids are due on Wednesday, tomorrow. I did walk around the MMA conference last weekend, spoke to some legal firms who may not have been aware of our intention, our, our interest in obtaining prices for legal services, so there were a few of them that wanted to submit. I expect one or two more might submit before the two o'clock deadline tomorrow. Some good news for the wastewater department, they had an approval at town meeting of thirteen million dollars for their leaching fields. The bids that were tabulated, were tabulated at below six and a half million right now. They're still vetting and there were three bids, I think below, at about that price. So I'm hopeful that, that they'll be able to have a substantial savings than what was, was approved by, by town meeting. We also received some, some estimated state revenues and charges for fiscal twenty-five. These are based on the governor's budget. Revenue's increased by about a hundred and seventy thousand, charges increased by about twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars. So there is a, there is a change. Again, the fiscal twenty-five proposed budget includes level funded state revenue, so there is some money there if the board wanted to bump up some revenue estimates. The Conservation Commission has approved the revised boat ramp. There is no need to go back to the state, so it's anticipated that the boat ramp construction will start sometime in the very near future. Again, I think I've made this, I made the board aware through an email, but just to make everybody else aware, we've advertised twice to the Finance Director position and have not found a suitable candidate. So Carol and I had a conversation and she's agreed to remain the Finance Director till June. She'll work remotely and you see her beaming face here tonight.
In some sort of very cool.
Yeah, she must be in Hawaii.
Oddly enough, we just started a municipal finance certificate at our college because of the need for finance directors.
Do you have an accelerated program?
I know, right?
So Carol was kind enough to, to work with us on that, so we'll be read, readvertising the Finance Director position probably in March or early April. And then lastly, the Facilities Department applied for and were, was awarded for the town a Green Communities grant, funding just over sixty-six thousand dollars to agenda improvements in five different town buildings, so congratulations to them. Be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions? Questions? No? No? Okay. All right. Selectmen comments. John, you got anything?
I got nothing this week.
Sheila?
No, I don't have anything this week.
Great.
Ditto.
Wait, don't say anything yet. Couple of things I just want to mention for an upcoming meeting, it doesn't have to be the thirteenth because I know that's, that's packed. The Fire Department was going to give an update in January, but the Fire Chief wasn't feeling a hundred percent, so he asked if he could do that in February. If the thirteenth is crazy, maybe we can do it the one after that. And then in February of last year, we said we were going to revisit the tax work off program to see how it's going and if we ever wanted to change anything. So I don't know if we wanted, again, I don't know if we want to do it on the thirteenth. We may just want to do that further out, but we said we wanted to look at it again to see if we wanted to change anything, so. That's all I had.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we adjourn at seven thirteen PM. And we adjourn at seven thirteen PM.